So I'm going to call the Meadville City Council's second public hearing, uh, both 2023 budget, uh, meeting, call it to order. Uh, Rocco McKnight?
Myers?
Here.
Rella?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kendra?
Here.
Uh, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notice of public hearing?
Your Honor, the public hearing was advertised in the Meadville Tribune on November 9th and November 11th, 2022.
All right, invitation for public comment regarding the proposed 2023 budget. Uh, Neil Falco?
Good evening, counsel. Neil Falco, I am the union president for the Fraternal Order of Police. Um, just here to speak a little bit about the budget and, uh, some of the things that we've worked through, uh, throughout the past year. So, uh, the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 97, we wish to express our appreciation for counsel's longstanding commitment of public safety in the Meadville community. We recognize the difficult position that this may have put the city in from a budgetary standpoint. The FOP is very, very aware that providing public safety to the community comes with a price tag. We thank counsel for prioritizing that cost in their budget. As well, we thank them for recognizing the cost, which ultimately creates a better quality of life for all of us who work, play, and live in the city of Meadville. As counsel has always made the safety of the residents a focus, we support counsel's proposed 2023 budget as we trust that counsel is acting in the best interest of the city, as they have over the years, with their support of our public safety. At the end of the day, we're a community who together must do what it is, what is needed to do to have Meadville thrive. So, so thank you all again, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
That was the only public. So can I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
Outlawed.
Second.
Uh, discussion? Yeah, I, I just want to say thanks again, Neil, and to our police department and the, um, the, uh, union, right? For, uh, seeing how difficult it was, you know, this budget is and how hard it is to, um, uh, make a budget and be people-oriented, right? Be, and, and give what we can to our police department and thank you guys the way we can, and that was, um, in your, uh, pension. And, uh, we just thank you for our public safety and, uh, the fact that people didn't even know how shorthanded we were. So we truly appreciate you guys, right? We, we thank you.
And we thank you, and we appreciate, like I said, we appreciate the support and, um, ultimately hopefully this is going to help us bring in, you know, future officers that want to stay and live in Meadville.
Truly, truly. All right, then I'm, uh, Rocco McKnight? Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
All right, it's, uh, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Uh, Rocco McKnight?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Rella?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kendra?
Here.
It looks like oath of office. Can I have a motion to concur with the city manager's appointment of Emily Baum?
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
So I'd like to introduce Emily Baum. Emily is from Collin Lake, PA. She graduated from CASH in 2015. She's coming to us from the Collin Lake Regional Police Department where she's been employed for the last two years. She's also spent the last five years as a dispatcher for the Crawford County 911 system. Um, and every time she likes lifting, hunting, hiking, she's very excited to expand her career and start a new career with the city of Meadville.
Fantastic. Sorry, I'm super excited, Emily, for you to come on board. Um, Rocco first, right? Yes, yes. Um, Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
And it looks like we will do the, um, the square yet? Don't come on up here to beat me. Wait, hold your, please repeat after me, okay? I, Emily Baum.
I, Emily Baum.
Solely swear and affirm that I will support. I don't want to go too far if you're going to say that.
Solely swear and affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with my fidelity. With fidelity.
So I'm so happy to have you here. Emily, I'm going to have the highest one, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, uh, Ta- now, just to make it clear, she's the first woman to ever be on the Meadville Police Department or just in recent history?
She's the first female police officer of the, in the history of Meadville.
Ow! Sorry, very excited. That's very exciting. Welcome again, Emily.
Thank you.
I'm more excited that we're getting a good officer.
Right, no, absolutely. Yeah, local, a great officer, a woman. We, we just are so happy to have you here. I don't know how many times you'll hear that from me, but
I always.
I hope you feel it, right?
Just got to do my job.
Right, right on, right on. When did you start?
She's currently training on the dispatch desk. She'll start on patrol Sunday night.
Fantastic. Thank you again. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, we'll just keep on moving. Uh, public comment on agenda items? Is this, this isn't, oh, rent deposit, okay. Um, Tom?
So as, uh, some of you know, I was the city codes enforcement officer and health officer for 20 years, uh, as an employee of the city. And then I was contracted back in 2004 for an additional six years as a contracted service. Uh, and so my job was enforcing property maintenance, building, plumbing, all those things. And the property maintenance code is a great, uh, code. It does a really good job if you're inside of those facilities. The, uh, average residential property in the city of Meadville is over 60 years old. And though we have some really great landlords in town, they don't know what they don't know. They don't know what's the codes are. And it takes a set of eyes outside of theirs to make that determination. Yes, I believe the landlords are probably going to have to stick some money into their properties. Some of them a lot more than others, but the whole idea is to have decent, safe, sanitary housing for our population. And just because someone is poor doesn't mean that they should not have the opportunity to, that, to live in safe housing like everyone else. As far as the inspections of, uh, homeowners' property, uh, it's probably a good idea, but it's up to them to ask for it. The tenants cannot do that. The tenants don't have control over the repairs. So they have to rely on counsel and the code to do what needs to be done for them. That's about all I have to say about it. I think it's an important new thing that we have to do. I was talking about it in the early 90s, uh, when Erie was putting theirs in place. And no one wanted to hear it back then, so I'm glad the council's finally looking at it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Notice of executive session minutes?
Your Honor, an executive session was held on November 16th, 2022 for the discussion of real estate.
Can I have a motion to approve, uh, minutes November 16th, 2022?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Um, can I have a motion to approve, um, meeting minutes, uh, on November 16th, regular meeting?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve regular meeting minutes, November 29th, uh, 2022, special budget meeting?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Um, communications? There are none. Uh, managers report?
Uh, the only item I have is that this weekend, the Market House will be hosting their annual market, um, the Holiday Market. It goes from 5 to 9, um, which has a lot of vendors. Just wanted to make sure that that was on counsel's radar. But that's the only thing that I have.
You said 5 to 9?
On the 10.
On the 10. Sorry, I just wanted to.
Sorry, can I ask a manager? Do, um, when will we see the balancing act?
They're still working, uh, through the analytics. There's a conversation, um, scheduled tomorrow that counsel's certainly, uh, able to be part of, to go over kind of the analytics on that. They, they haven't had time to flush out, um, about that.
So we were, so that's waiting on the folks at balancing out?
Correct.
Was, and was it still a matter of like parsing out the eligible versus ineligible?
It wasn't. We've done that. It's, it's on their end of taking that data out and, and changing it to reflect the accurate results. So hopefully, again, there's a conversation tomorrow. Hopefully, um, by next meeting, we'll have that available.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Uh, council subcommittee reports. I know how's the development. We don't have anything, uh, new at this point. It's not already on the agenda. Community engagement?
I can swear. We're all just all, we're all just kind of in it. Well, it's all on the, we've been doing the balancing act and figuring out to get people engaged.
Okay. So nothing new that's not on the agenda already?
Yeah, yeah.
Finance?
Nothing new.
Okay, so we'll move to old business. Uh, resolution authorize signatures, online permitting, and licensing code enforcement, case management, and ARC GIS integration?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a professional services agreement for online permitting and licensing, code enforcement, case management, and ARC GIS integration between the city of Meadville and GoGov.
Can I have a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
So as Gary Johnson discussed with counsel at the November 16th meeting, the city received almost $200,000 in state grants to implement various technology recommendations made out of the strategic management planning program report. This, uh, ARC GIS integration, as well as the following item that counsel will vote on, are two of those, uh, recommendations of the technology. Any questions on it? Gary is here. He may answer those, um, but this is just voting to sign those contracts.
How much money is going to come out of our general fund versus grants?
The total value of the, of the three components that we're still to implement, two of them tonight, is about $170,000 total. Of that 17,000 is the city's, um, share. Note that that is for four years of the code enforcement part of it, three years of the public works component of it, and five years of the GIS component. So this goes out three, four, and five years, and the 17,000 would be distributed over those, those years.
So, um, the, um, the quote, the contract that we're looking at right now is the code enforcement and GIS end, and that was four and five years ago?
It's, it's for the, the GoGov is, is the code enforcement permitting inspections, things like that.
And that's four and, it's four and five years of that are covered?
It's, that's actually, it's four years of that. The other one is Cartograph, which is the public works section, or portion of it, and there's three years worth of that. The GIS is the five years. I might have misspoken.
Um, Gary, this is for the, um, the technology, the, and, and them to keep up the site, correct?
The website is, was already approved last year. Katie's, Katie's leading that up.
That's what I, that's why I was, I was just a little bit confused. So this is for a, um, like our, I'm, I'm forgetting my words. Yeah, but it's like, so four and five years of them doing that work, right? Like of, of like a subscription?
It's a subscription. You have to pay for the software that, that we'll use.
Right, right.
Uh, to, to enable us to do our jobs more efficient, efficiently.
Do we, are we guaranteed that this will be the rate each year? Do we have any sense of this, if this will be the rate after that?
We don't. We, we're hopeful that it wouldn't be too much more. I mean, um, they're able to commit to that length of time. I'm thinking to keep our business, hopefully that it'll be reasonable after that, a few percent probably a year.
What does it look like time-wise to implement, to introduce these? When will we have this online?
Cartograph and GoGov would both, both hopefully be January 1.
Um, Gary, so how much time do you think it'll take for you to, like, train on this, this lot? Your face right now.
It's, there's, there's quite a bit involved. Um, there's the training on it, but there's also importing about 20 years' worth of data from our existing, um, access database program that we use. So there's about 20 years we need to import into that, make sure that all works. Uh, we need to train on that. That's for the GoGov. The Cartograph, I'm not sure. That's Nathan Sizilis has headed that up, so I can't speak to specifics on that.
Are you going to be putting in the 20 years manually, but, or it'll, it'll go in, hopefully, ho-
It's the magic of computers.
Right, yeah, no, no, I've tried it with phones before and not a lot of debt, you know, that's why I'm asking, like, how much year of time?
The plan is to, to export that from the access database into this seamlessly. They say it can be done. I trust them.
I've heard that.
Yes.
Well, I guess, I guess we'll see, right? Didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
No problem.
All right. Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Okay, I'm on B, right? Resolution authorize signatures, Cartograph Solutions Master Agreement between Meadville and Cartograph.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signature on a Cartograph Solutions Master Agreement between the city of Meadville and Cartograph.
Second.
Discussion? This is the public works. And again, the same type of, of thing, right? Like, uh, whatever information will seamlessly be exported?
We don't have quite as much digitally at Public Works, but yes, anything we have, we can put into that and import.
And then, and then Nathan will have to put in whatever needs to be put in from here.
That's correct.
So anybody have any other questions?
Is this, is this the program that we were told would, um, support a capital improvement and, and that's?
It would help to do that analysis. I mean, it goes everything from guide rails to signs to catch basins to streets, you know? It governs all that. You can spit out reports. You can do analysis. It's GIS-based. You can input information from the field, you know, from an iPad, you know? It does all that, all that stuff. So it should, definitely should help me, help Nathan to really help inform his forecasting, correct?
And then will it, will it also help us be, like, it'll work with your, with the new website and help us be transparent in what we're doing and, or what's been done at least with, you know?
Yeah, this, this will be more of the backend. But there are components of the new website that will kind of work with.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Do you have any questions? Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Ordinance first and second reading, 2023 tax levy first reading motion.
An ordinance for the, an ordinance for the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, levying the following taxes and fixing the rates of taxation for the city of Meadville for the year 2023, being a tax for general revenue purposes, a tax to pay interest and principal on any indebtedness incurred pursuant to the Local Government Unit Act, a tax for capital improvements, a tax for recreation and parks, a tax for shade trees, and a residence tax for general revenue purposes, all of which taxes are levied pursuant to the applicable authority in establishing the penalty charge for late payment of such taxes.
Can I have a first reading motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, so counsel, the ordinance as drafted before you is, is what was discussed at the November 29th special budget meeting. This is the adoption of the 2 mil tax increase.
Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Do you guys, on both of my copies, I have that on the third line, it says the year 2020.
Uh, yep, got it.
Exactly. That was the only thing, because every place else is 2023.
Okay, Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Motion for second reading.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? I guess we're ready to discuss. Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Ordinance first and second reading, 2023 budget.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopting and establishing a budget for all funds of the city of Meadville for year 2023, including the general fund, debt and capital funds, liquid fuels program fund, stormwater management program fund, parking fund, real estate management funds, and special revenue funds, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the various programs, and funds of the city of Meadville for 2023, and establishing authorized maximum personnel compliments for certain departments of the city of Meadville for 2023.
So, Rocco?
Can I have a motion for a first reading motion? Uh, second?
Second.
Discussion?
So this, uh, draft ordinance before you incorporates the changes discussed in the November 29th special budget meeting. This includes expenditures of $125,000 to the mark, the medical change savings of $179,576, workman's comp savings of $12,367, and then only using 3, $33,057 from the rate stabilization fund as opposed to initially proposed $100,000.
Do we have any questions? Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye. Can I have a second, or a motion for second reading?
Motion.
A second? Discussion? Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
Resolution authorize signature stormwater, uh, facilities easement agreement, city of Meadville and Rachel Morrison.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a stormwater facilities easement agreement between rifle Morrison?
And there was- Is it rifle?
Yeah, I, I just checked the easement to see if it's the same. It's, yeah, okay. And the city of Meadville for 240 Race Street.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Uh, so this is, uh, easement agreement for 240 Race Street, pretty common with our stormwater easements. The intent behind this is to allow the city to enter onto this property and clear, clean out, and maintain one of our culverts, which has collapsed and will need some work done.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is this the same as the ones we passed before that we looked at recently? I don't know why I didn't remember it being like the actual transaction with the sale. And was this brought to our attention because it, uh, the culvert collapsed or, or was this when you all were in the neighborhood in the last few months?
This is the wall that came down, right? Isn't it a retaining wall?
I think it was a culvert.
Yeah, it's the, we have a culvert that goes under Race in Columbia, and I think it's to help maintain that for whatever needs to be done. It would give us perpetual right to go in there and take it, whatever needs taken care of, taken care of.
And we're going to take care of the whole place?
To your question.
Yeah. And that came out of that cool meeting, I think?
Correct, yeah.
Good work.
Yes, that was, city staff, I heard, went to a meeting in the fifth ward. And I just heard good things about how the days after, city staff was out there walking around, checking out the neighborhood and following up on things. So, um, the neighbors, I think, really appreciated it and obviously good things came, came out of it and taking care of the infrastructure down there. That's great. So thanks.
Would that solve, like, the problem with the, where it's collapsing, kind of the, the bridge, you know? You know how like, do you know, it's like the wall, and then there's the place on their property where there's like the water, it's like, kind of mosquito-y?
I believe this is the opposite side of that road. I think we're working on the, the rest of that, but this is on the, the old American Rescue Company. I don't know if that means anything to you, that brick building?
Yeah.
This is on that side.
Yeah.
The, what you're talking about, I think, is partially on this other side as well, but we're working on it.
And Gretchen, what you're referring to is a, a much bigger, um, issue. I think it's going to be involved some other municipalities, um, perhaps as well.
Thank you.
So it's a bigger, a little bit bigger than just, just this, yeah.
On this picture, it's just the red part? Is that where you're, is that what you're, how just property easement? You're just fixing in that red part for?
Correct, yes, that's the eas-
Or all of the yellow polka dots there?
The easement is just that red block, but the yellow dots is showing the culvert Gary was referencing?
And I, I just wasn't sure, because the, when Gretchen asked that, if it was both sides, the whole thing or just that area that we're looking at right now? Okay, Rocco? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rella?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye. Ordinance first and second reading, residential rental registration and licensing program?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, creating a residential rental registration and licensing program within the city of Meadville, providing for a short title, providing for a short title expressing the authority for and the purpose and intent of the program, providing for definitions, establishing the requirements for the registration and licensure of residential rental units, establishing exemptions to registration and licensing requirements, providing for the establishment of fees, ensuring the right of a tenant to report suspected violations, establishing minimum insurance obligations and the penalties for failure to permit an inspection, creating a procedure for issuing notices of violation and for appeals, establishing penalties for violations of the ordinance, providing for severability and an effective date.
Kind of a motion for the first reading?
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
So this is largely similar to what you, uh, received previously. After some additional discussion, I will note that Allegheny, all of Allegheny's properties have been moved out of the rental inspection ordinance with the intent of placing them under the boarding house ordinance. That is what is in this before you today. And then also the reason for the discussion of the rooming house ordinance following. Counsel, I ask, if there's a consensus to move in that direction, uh, upon adoption of first and second reading of this.
You asked us to have that discussion in the rooming house ordinance?
No.
Oh, yeah, now, right?
Yeah, yeah, to, to pass on this on first and second reading.
Any questions on this?
I have some questions and some comments.
I have some questions and some comments. I gave a copy of some of the comments to the solicitor and the city manager. There are a couple of items where you just need to change language. I'm not supporting the ordinance anyway, but at least it should be a little bit more clear in some areas. I won't waste time on those. But what the public needs to be aware, like under the definition of owner, if anyone decides to build a cooperative housing unit, in a co-op, you do not have title to the property. You're a stockholder and you have a proprietary lease. So if you have a cooperative, the, the units are going to be subject to this ordinance, as long as you understand that. Under the residential rental unit registration requirement, there are a couple of sections, section 5C and section 8. And what ends up happening is you'll have a landlord, as an example, could register a property on October 31st and pay the fee, and if he sells the unit a month later, the new owner has to pay another fee and re-register. That seems like a bit of overkill. And just a couple more. Oh, a copy of the license has to be displayed in the unit. That's an exercise in futility, because there will be tenants who will take the license down, decide that they want to use a frame to have a picture of their pet hamster, whatever it happens to be. And knowing our past practice, even if a tenant misbehaves, we end up charging the owner of the property, which is simply not equitable and counterproductive. What else? Okay. Under exemptions, again, co-op units are not exempt. We did not really address Westbury, Vola's and apartments. That's not really, so they may not be exempt. And I have a problem with college apartments being exempt. It really isn't equitable, because you're putting the burden of inspection on the rest of the rental landlords in the, in the community. Oh, yeah. Under the exemptions for relatives, I think we have parents and children, adult children. I know it's only a matter of time until someone shows up to council, because their grandmother's unit is going to be subject for their grandchildren or nephews or nieces, and we're going to go through all this again. So you might as well clean the ordinance up. Even if it's a bad ordinance, if it's a bad ordinance, but it's consistent, it's better than being inconsistent. And the insurance requirement, that's page eight, section 10A, requires a minimum of $25,000 coverage per residential unit. I'm the son of an insurance agent, and I'm not aware of any insurance company who would rent, who would insure an individual unit in a multi-unit rental building. I think you should probably change that to a minimum of $25,000 in hazard and casualty insurance per residential structure, because you are, you are doing this by the, the, but you're hitting one segment of the real estate owning population. You're not getting single-family unoccupied dwellings. You're not doing commercial or industrial. I know you have other, other programs, but you're, you're targeting a group. I think it's going to be counterproductive in the long run. In fact, I'm sure it's going to be counterproductive in the long run. So at least if you make some of the editorial changes, it'll go from absolutely abominable to merely awful.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, I, I think, what are we doing with Westbury and the Bella apartments?
Staff has a call with Westbury Friday. We need some additional clarification on how they, they handle those units and how they classify them internally before we can make any recommendations or, or decisions for council.
Yeah, I guess I would kind of want to just talk through your points, Jim, like the new owner, is, is that overkill? I, I mean, I'm not an expert in, I maybe we should look into that. I don't know if it's, I don't know.
You talked about if, if you sell.
Right, yeah, what Jim was saying.
I assume that I would come to Gary and I'd be like, this is just, what, what do we do? And that would be?
There, when we put together the $38 cost, there's an inspection portion of that, and there's a, which goes to, which would go to the third-party contractor inspection agency, and then there is the registration portion of it. But I guess when we go to do the fee schedule in January, we could probably split that out into two and say there's a full registration inspection fee, and then there's a interim registration fee or something like that that would just reflect the, this, the internal staff costs for registration. We could probably do that straight up through the fee schedule. I don't know if we need to change the ordinance to do that.
Right.
Since the fee isn't in the ordinance, but that's, that's a valid question, valid point.
It sounds like it's workable, potentially, within, within the fee, the passcode, within the fee structure setup. Yeah, I mean, you know, here are some of your points, Jim. I guess I just want to make it clear, like Allegheny College was moved to the rooming house ordinance. I, it's my understanding, at some point, we'll hear a proposal from, from staff for like what's going to work there. And the precedent for that was set by Erie. That's how they handle college-owned units in the city of Erie, where they also have a rental inspection and licensing program. So we're following suit, which actually means units are inspected annually, not every two years or every four years. So they're certainly not exempt. It's, it's just shifting under which ordinance they're, they're being inspected. Is, so that addresses some of your points.
And to be fair, Jim, I think that, that it was your point when you brought up the, the fact of, of, you know, having, having a home with multiple people in it, and they're not related, right? We, you discussed that, you said that, and that's why, that's some of the reason that, that it needs to be boarding house and not, and, and we'll do that discussion directly after this, right? But, but that was a good point, right? You brought that up. How are we going to deal with that? And I think it was thought through, and this is the best way that, that Allegheny fits in. So by all means, not exempt, just move to a different definition, because they, it gets better there. Go ahead, Autumn, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, did you have more to say?
I have less to say. I was trying to move.
Yeah, no, 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 I just wanted to, to point that out, and it was a great point, you know, that I, I didn't think about, right? Like, and I appreciate you bringing that up. As far as, I'm, I'm just trying to write. Gretchen, did you have any other questions on the things that Jim, Jim was putting?
I think, well, the insurance would be interesting to look at. I, I don't know, like.
I think that insurance had been set higher in an earlier draft. It was brought down lower because it's the cost of demoing a unit.
Correct.
If, if it was considered, it was.
Now the rationale behind the 25.
Yeah, because it's not that much.
My point is you cannot ensure one apartment and two apartment buildings.
Right. So you're just saying that the word structure opposed to unit is what he's saying.
And for the record, I believe Edinburgh charges per room. A former trustee of Edinburgh told me that they paid something like $38,000 to the borough of Edinburgh for inspection. So there's equal precedent for having the college be included in your ordinance.
And they will be included in the rooming house ordinance, which also sees a fee too, like that, that's associated with those inspections.
And, and inspected twice as much.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear your points, Jim. I guess I don't really, I, I hear your point especially about the insurance piece. I, I'm, I'm willing to amend that, but I, but I will say, like, at this point, I, I feel confident the ordinance has been under review several times by the, the folks at, at Knox and another law firm that was helping us through this process, and the law firm we had before. So I think that it's been well vetted. I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling good about it. I, I'll defer.
It has been reviewed.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, so.
The legality of this.
Well, and we'll ask about per unit infrastructure, right? Like, it's, it's a word maybe, because I was under the impression it was infrastructure too. So like, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Jim.
So I will send Jim's comments to Tim. Tim has been working on this, and, and give any feedback that he thinks is necessary to incorporate, or if some of the changes are just.
Change that word, like the, the word.
But it's also, so, but Jim, you sent your comments to Tim already. You said?
I know, I just gave them to Bob.
You just handed them to me.
You gave them to Bob right now, when we have the ordinance in front of us for first and second reading, and we have this in front of us.
I, I just got it done.
Yeah. Okay, well, I mean, all right. I, called question. Can, can we vote?
Yeah, no, we're going to move on. I just wanted to, to make sure Gretchen, you, you had your questions.
Yeah, yeah.
And we discussed, you know, as needed. Are there any more questions? Vogel.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
No.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Can I have a motion for second reading?
Motion.
Second discussion? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
No.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
E, discussion update to the rooming house and bed and breakfast ordinance.
Because, because moving Allegheny into the umbrella of the rooming house and bed and breakfast ordinance, we had to crunch some numbers, and there are a couple of different options which council can discuss. Gary is here, and Gary can talk about some of those items.
Right, so if we move, there's a few different ways. I guess if council's amenable to move to all the Allegheny dwellings, houses, apartments, traditional dorms into the rooming house ordinance, that would be done by the fire department. They would do the inspections, and I would issue the licenses for them. There's a few different ways of doing it. We did some rough estimates on exactly how we, how we would come up with a fee. The fire department has an $80 an hour fee. That's their, for their inspections, that's what we charge, because that's actually what it costs to have them to sustain their, their work for, for an hour. So if you broke everything down using estimates of actual time that it would take estimated, and I'm going to keep saying this estimated, it would be roughly, I want to say, just about $8,000 a year. That's like straight up time. Now, if we took it, and, I mean, it's going to start to get a little convoluted here, but we have four rooming houses in town. There's an average of 13 rooms per rooming house. So if we took the time and the number of rooms that Allegheny has divided by 13, you'd come up somewhere around, I don't know, $10,000 to $12,000 a year. There's another way you could do it with basically a $125 minimum per building, which is what we charge for rooming house licenses every year. We charge $125 per rooming house, which would push it up to the 12, maybe $13,000 a year. Okay? So there's different ways you can come about it, and we would need to determine that at the fee schedule stage in January, whenever council adopts that. So there, but there's a few different ways. So the first one I mentioned is straight up, what's, how much time has it taken us? Which is what we do now with Allegheny College, because at Allegheny, we currently, the fire department, not me, inspects all the buildings of the college, all the common areas of the traditional dorms, but not the individual rooms. Okay? We don't go into the rooms right now. This would add the rooms to everything. So if we took the time we really think it would take, estimated would take, actual time, it's probably going to be around the $8,000. If we had essentially like a minimum per building or minimum per 13 rooms or something, that would come up to the $10,000 to the $13,000 a year number. Okay? So that's, that's kind of how we came up with that. We can think about that, ruminate a little bit on that. But that's kind of how we put that out there for, for different ways of actually charging it. But that's really the, roughly the numbers you're looking at. It's not astronomical, astronomical numbers, but it's going to be roughly in that range.
And the ordinance itself, so in your packets, you have the, the rooming house ordinance. It's been updated to incorporate the, as in defined dorms. So that's under section five. So you see that language added there. Really, aside from the addition of that, and if council's, again, consensus is to put all of Allegheny's dorms, apartments under the boarding house, then we could potentially have this for first and second reading at the next meeting. And then you can think about, and we can discuss more about the fee that's associated with that.
How does this relate to standalone houses that Allegheny has? They have some houses that are language houses, like they have an Italian house, a German house, and a French house. And I don't know how many students are in those, but according to the zoning ordinance, you can't have more than four. By changing this over to a rooming house, are they going to be able to accommodate more people? And that creates a separate set of issues.
Not necessarily. Under, under this, it would be, it would include all the off, off-campus housing, if you, if you, all the apartments and the houses. It includes all of that. Anywhere a student might stay is included in this.
But you still have the four-person limit.
Under the zoning ordinance, yeah, which is another discussion that we'll have with the college at some point.
And that's for their zoning too? Like, they're in a different zone, right? Like, the college, and it's an institution, so their zone is different. So does that mean that, you know, they, they fall under something different? That's what I mean, like, that's like a multi.
It depends, I guess, is the best answer, because when you're talking on campus, obviously wouldn't apply. If you're talking off-campus, then we need to have a discussion at that point. I don't want to get into any details, because it kind of depends on exactly where you are.
Right, and, and we're still working on the zoning.
We are.
We also have the zoning to do.
So the question in front of us is, do we want to move with including all Allegheny properties in the rooming house ordinance?
I think.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm thinking room board.
Yeah.
So at least that's, that is how I, you know, I'm thinking of it is, is yes. So I'm just going to leave it simple at that, otherwise I'm going to say lots of words, as I usually do.
So again, I'll, I'll speak with Tim, and we, we'll make sure that, you know, this can be ready, maybe for first and second reading at the next meeting, if Tim's on, feels that it's ready for that.
And is, is it staff that's going to then, then parse through the options that you laid out, Gary, and return with a recommendation of how we should move forward?
We can come up with the staff recommendation, sure.
I do, yeah. I would say either a staff recommendation or like subcommittee or something. I don't, I don't know that we need to hash it out at a council meeting, but.
We can bring a staff recommendation.
I think a staff recommendation, yeah.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Well, I think, Gary, it seems, it seems like it would be to do it, like, what, what the fire department is doing now, it seems like it's working. Can we just kind of keep that mode and be, and then the question is like, I guess in my head, because I get my inspection notice, it's like, oh, there it is, and it's just set. It's a set thing.
Yeah, right now, when the fire department does an inspection, it's essentially, other than the rooming houses currently, which are a set fee, it's, it's based on how, how, how long do they spend there?
Yeah.
So under the commercial inspections, none of the college inspections, hospital, all that, it's all, how long does it take? And they divide it up, you know, into $80 an hour. And we can certainly do that. The only issue with that is that Allegheny's not going to have a set amount, and they can say, we're going to budget this, exactly this amount.
Okay.
So it may vary, but, I mean, it should be roughly the same after the first inspection or two. There really shouldn't be a whole lot of stuff to do, that, you know, improvements or anything like that.
That's the con, okay.
That's exactly it. It would just, it would vary. And that would be the fairest way of doing it from a actual time spent, but we also have to look at the other rental, at the other rooming houses and be fair to them as well.
Any other questions? All right. We have no public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, council member statements. Jim?
Well, thank you. It's that time of year again, when I hope we think about our less fortunate members of the community. And if you have it in, in your wallet, in your heart, donate to worthwhile organizations like Toys for Tots, the Jimmy Moore Fund, the Salvation Army, any other organization of your choosing, and help some people have a little nicer holiday.
Gretchen?
I, I think the light-up nights, I can say that. It's really great. I have to say, I've heard so many comments of just about how wonderful it can experience. I took my kids out of dance class, and we got to see you guys all up there. It's like, it was really exciting. And we received that lovely communication about.
And we received that lovely communication about someone who's not from here. It was just like, wow, this is a really cool town and it's got, you know, really amazing businesses. So that, I just had this like a little bright spot there in the week. And so thank you. It's great.
Um, there?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
You're good?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, tonight, way more quickly than I thought. We did two things that I think we really needed to do. We took the first step to address unsafe rental housing in Meadville. And unfortunately, we also raised taxes. As Mayor Kinder pointed out at the last budget meeting, we've had to do these things because they haven't been done for so long. So the rental licensing program, it'll address decades of neglect in some cases in the places that Meadville citizens are living and calling home, raising their families. I'm just, I'm proud of this council and of staff for sticking it out through this year. It was a hard year, hard meetings, but I'm glad that we've gotten to this point. It was a difficult process that was made difficult by folks who don't want to see this measure for basic health and safety in our city. But I'm glad we were able to stick it out and at least take the first of two steps tonight. Separately, we also raised taxes. This one less happy about, especially now, the cost of everything is going up. It's hard to ask working people to pay more. However, the cost of everything up is going up for the city too. And for decades, our financial situation has been also neglected, though, though some people work really hard on it all the time, Tim. But, but, but the balance hasn't always been there. Right, Tim said, we've been pulling from our equivalent of savings, selling things off to make ends meet, but we can only do that for so long. A two-mill tax increase doesn't fix that situation, but especially given the, how much the state really limits how much we can raise revenue, it's, it's really one of our only options to get us closer to being in balance. And yeah, I'm really hoping that we can maybe devote the first study session of 2023 to a conversation with Tim, other, both Tims probably, to look at like strategies that, that we can look at for the year of, of really trying to, to right the ship. I don't want to be having the same conversation this time next year. We can't afford to. But we did important things tonight. Doesn't feel great, but they had to be done because they haven't been done. So I appreciate folks up here doing, doing the things that we're doing. If things happen in Meadville.
I, again, just want to say that I'm super proud of the city. Light-up night was awesome. We had like 700 people. And as I said there, I'll reiterate that it is, this time of year makes me very happy because we remember our neighbors, we remember that we're in the same city, that we are choosing to spend this life together in the same vicinity, right? And everybody remembers to give, right, this time of year, everybody remembers that we are part of one, one people, right? And then magically we forget it on the 26th. But I'm hoping that moving forward in our community, we, we don't forget so easily and we keep coming together and we get to recognize how magical Meadville is, right? How we're all working on all of these things that, that make life easier for all of us. And you, if you haven't seen our giving tree back here, it truly shows how magical Meadville is and all the people in it. Because not only is it full, but so is the tree next to it. And like a clothesline between them is full of stuff for people to take. And we are remembering our neighbors and we are feeding our neighbors and we are coming together as a people. And Meadville can be that island, right? We can, we can remember that all year long. We don't have to separate. We can remember that we are, we are, there, there's more that brings us together than separates us. So I'm just hoping.
Before you finish, I would like to say something.
Yeah, so I just want to, to thank everybody here, thank everybody that works at Meadville. I know you guys are sick of hearing that, but I really do like these people and they do work very, 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 very hard. And I want to appreciate this council, every single person on it. Because, because I do believe that the people on here care about our city, right? Regardless of if we see eye to eye on everything or not, that's what we're here for. So I appreciate everybody here, everybody in the room. And I'm going to let Larry speak because.
I just wanted to, you know, we, we mentioned giving and going out, getting toys and things. But something that touched me closely, go check on your neighbor. Check on that family member that you haven't spoken with or that, that sibling that you haven't spoken with. That's one of the best gifts you can give somebody. So I encourage people to go out and do that. It might make somebody's day better.
Thank you, Larry. And with that, I'm going to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.